At this time, I'll entertain a motion that we approve our agendas this evening. Mr. Goodenow, second Mr. Proctor, any discussion? All in favor? All right, and that will take us to item C, the future property outlook, and that the Harris County Board of Education discuss future property outlook for the Harris County School District. Dr. Finney.
Thank you. Thank you for everybody being here today. As you know, in Harris County, we are growing and we are developing. And that's a major concern in the county as well as with the school district. And so we hear a lot from citizens about their concerns about how we are growing and how that's going to impact our school district. And when we get those concerns, we know that the school district is ultimately going to impact the entire county. So as you know, we've been talking about, well, I hope you know, if you haven't, in the last couple of years and recent months, we've been talking about the possible need for another elementary school here in Harris County. We've been working with our facilities consultants at the state DOE to determine when that will happen and how that will happen and lining up all of the capital outlay funds and so forth. I know it's a main concern here in Harris County about the location of that, that school. And so we have been discussing and considering, among other things, our property on Hopewell Church Road as a potential site for an elementary school. We have heard some concerns about that site. And so hearing those concerns about that site, we wanted to have an opportunity for the public to participate in a meeting to discuss, you know, those potential sites. As we've been preparing for this meeting in recent weeks, I've also had some, and I'll be able to discuss that as we go on in the meeting. I've had some discussions with some other entities about some additional sites. So we just wanted to, as we move in that direction, hear the concerns and provide some clarity in, in that instance. Because we know as we move forward with our development here in the school district, you know, as we grow, that means more houses, means more students. And you have to pay for buildings and buses and land and property and that kind of stuff. So we wanted to have this special meeting today to give the public some opportunity to hear this matter and speak on this matter. So, Mr. Chair, I do have three people that have signed up that would potentially like to speak. And the first one on that is Mr. Marlowe. So thank you, Mr. Marlowe, for being here.
Appreciate y'all doing this. As you know, I requested some meetings and I said I would do it in a small meeting. I do it one-on-one, I do it in a large group. Didn't matter to me as long as I got a chance to talk. However, one of you, and I think I know who, but I'm not gonna say any names, has been discussing with the commissioners and insinuated that I was trying to do small meetings to avoid open records requests. And I would hope that after you found out that it was not me, you had the courtesy to call the commissioner back and tell him that it was not me. Y'all know me, I mean, I'm gonna say what I'm gonna say, I don't care who hears it or who's in front of it. But I've got a couple of questions to begin with. When you swap, when we swapped some land to acquire the 200 acres, there was a deal in place to put a school in the Grove. I mean, it's been set aside, but nothing formally. I'd like to know what the thought process was on why you turned that down? And also what the thought process was that led you to believe Hopewell Church Road would be a good site? The only one I've heard so far is that we already own the land, but in my opinion, that's not always the best route to take. That site was purchased as a second high school site. And even at the time, it was not a great purchase. It was, it was, we overpaid way too much money for it. And the second middle school site was over 15 miles down the road. So it just was not a logistical fit. And if you continue down this path of thinking that Hopewell Church Road is a good school, even for an elementary school, it, you're just gonna be, in my opinion, you'll be compounding the problem of a bad purchase. Because no matter where this county grows, it doesn't matter which direction it grows in, it won't be there. You'll forever be busing students to that location. It really doesn't matter. You can look at the maps, you can look at the growth, you can look anywhere you want to look, but it won't be there. With that said, you can look at the history of Harris County and you can tell that our commissioners don't plan their idea of growth and development, standing up in the back of the room saying, hey, I got an idea. I mean, just look at, look at what we got with the Ag Center, that whole debacle. To me, we should be putting schools in the path of the natural path of growth. We should be using the schools to facilitate infrastructure development to generate support for commercial and industrial growth to help offset the residential and ag tax burden. You need to be adding diversity to that tax digest. The areas of natural growth are West Point at 103, somewhere in the Catala Forson area, and then somewhere over in Midland. And I think, Dr. Finney, I think you've addressed some of those areas. There is, there has been some discussion about a possible swap of some land somewhere in West Point, potentially for some land that we acquire behind Creekside, but that's, that's between you and the commissioners. But that, that could be done. You need to access areas of sewer to help facilitate that growth. You've already locked in your second high school site. You know where the second middle school is. I don't, I don't see how you can even begin to, to look at elementary school sites without knowing where the next ones are gonna be. You're gonna need at least two, probably three. And if you place one without knowing where the second or third is, and you're gonna be doing it blind. You need to know where that, where those, all those locations are gonna be before you select any one of them. Over the last 10 years, there's been a little over 2,000 residential permits pulled in Harris County. 10 years. You're fixing to have at least 2,000 homes built on 315 in the Grove. I mean, that's 10 years of growth in one building. You've got another 1,500 to 2,000 that could be built right there on 315. I know there's some discussion there, I don't know where that is, I'm not involved in any of those. I just know what's on, on the plans. So given all of that, how does a Hopewell Church Road site help you? I, I don't see how it does. It just, to me, it adds to unnecessary cost of education through unnecessary busing. The last point I want to make is, has anybody even talked to the county about the capacity of the water out there? If you build a school and you don't know the capacity and they have to build a tower, that's gonna be additional cost to the taxpayers. Some way, shape, form, or fashion, it won't, it may have to come from the school. You'll have to do like you did at Hamilton. There's already a tower being built in the Grove to add to the capacity of that development. Why not utilize that? That's really all I got.
Do you want to have any questions for this one?
Thank you. You mentioned that there was a discussion between us and the commissioners.
I never said it was between you and the commissioners.
That said something about swapping land.
I said there's, there's been some discussion, I didn't say who it was between. There's a potential out there, but you've got to be willing to reach out to the right entities. And I don't see that happening as of yet, until this past couple of weeks.
Yeah, because we have, we have met with the commissioners and stuff, but there's been no discussion of swapping of land or stuff between.
If I'm, if I'm mistaken, if I'm not mistaken, I think it was brought up. It was mentioned at your meeting. It may not have been in a formal meeting, but it was mentioned.
Okay.
You have a question? Ms. Marlowe, are you, are you aware of any development coming into Harris County that's affordable housing?
I know there's some discussions. And some of this, like, it's just in the planning stages, so it may or may not come about. But there were a lot of discussions about affordable housing. And you can lay a lot of what is, again, this is my opinion, you can talk to a bunch of other people and get a lot of other opinions. But in my opinion, what we've done in the last 20 years in Harris County with our zoning has led to the cost of houses being over $400,000. And until you do something to address that, and that's why I say you gotta do something with the sewer and help build out that infrastructure, help them bring, they're building, Dr. Finney, how many homes are they building over there in West Point? 200 additional homes right there?
Yeah, about, yes.
So if you build a school over in that area, somewhere out in that area, you could help grow that sewer. It may be at a little bit of a cost to you, but I mean, that's what a public-private partnership's about, right? You get a location, you pay for a little bit of sewer, you expand that.
So we've, we've looked at the numbers, sorry, we've looked at the numbers of the apartments at the Grove and the two build-out phases that they've done so far with the housing on that side with the apartments. And then, of course, the Houston Home Development that went almost directly across Oak Hill, Oak Hill, yeah. And we've looked at the numbers of children, elementary age children, that are coming out of there. And it's, it's not a whole lot, but, but simply because, you know, you and I have known each other a long time. When our children were little, there was affordable housing for a family starting out in Harris County. Now there's not. The, you know, they may be able, some families come out with small kids and be able to afford that. But the majority of the folks buying those houses have either high school age kids or no children in the school system at all.
Okay.
So, you know, we're very curious as to, you know, if there is going to be a development, yes, we do need to be on the ground floor of that, because if there's gonna be 200 homes go into a, or more, go into a subdivision somewhere, say, Mr. White's property, or, you know, maybe they re-phase the Grove and do something else in the Grove.
They, they're fixing, there's 2,000 homes scheduled for the Grove. 2,000. So why would you not put, no matter what the age kids, if you need another home, I mean, if you need another elementary school, why wouldn't you put it in the middle of the Grove? And I'm not saying it has to go in the Grove. I'm just saying you put it down there somewhere in the Grove, near a community that eliminates some of the need for busing. You build, you build communities, you build within communities that allow for sidewalks, for walking, for biking, for golf carts, for whatever, and eliminate some of them.
Well, let me ask too. You say there's been discussions and stuff and everything in regards to this, but I'm kind of confused in the fact that being on the board and talking with the commissioners, there's nothing that's coming to us about any of this. And my concern is that I was on this board when we bought that property in Hopewell Church Road.
That's right, it was, it was overpaid for then, too.
Right, the reason for that was, is because, oh, lo and behold, the energy division's gonna move, come to Fort Benning, and Brack's gonna come in and we were gonna have all these kids and we had no property. And so on information and speculation that we would get this many kids, we would have it. So we bought it, planned for it. What do we get? Zip. My question is, is this gonna be Brack 2.0? In speculation that we might have kids that come to $450,000 homes, when we're not seeing that? So what, what do you know that the commissioners and us and everybody, we don't know? Because we, if, if you expect us.
Steve, that's a pretty open-ended question right there. I think I know a pretty good bit more than you know.
Expect us to make a decision on information that.
It, it, Stephen, it really doesn't.
Quantifiable at this time.
So here's the thing. If you're saying you don't know if kids are coming, why are we even having this discussion about another elementary school? If you don't know that they're coming, why do it? If they are, and so if there are new homes coming, why not make a plan to put it where the growth is gonna be instead of out in the middle of nowhere? There will be no growth there, zero. You have no chance of building to that school.
We have talked about that. The only preliminary stuff we have done on Hopewell Church Road is done requirements for, to see if that land is suitable to put a school.
And my, and my point at the time was that is the only option you have at this time. So don't, don't, don't lock yourself into one option. That was what was so disappointing. You had two options and you kicked one of them off the table and you left yourself eliminated to one. I would have at least, I've gone way over my time, so y'all tell me when you're done.
I think I can add, I think I can add, I think I can add to that. As the board knows, I've, I had last week a conversation with Charles Ray Sheffield with Woodruff Properties. And he and I reestablished some communications and I stressed to him, we were just in the initial stages of, of considering what that property might be for us. And he's open to continue those talks for a site there in the Grove. I told him our main concern would be, what if the property was allocated to us in whatever that looks like, whatever that looks like? Would there be a forced timeline on us because of what Mr. Goodenow's saying is we, we don't know exactly what that timeline would be? We don't know if it's gonna materialize, but we would potentially have that site there in case we needed it. And so he's open to continue those, those discussions. So I'm gonna have to get more information on, you know, what happens if we are allocated this property, however we acquire it? It's gonna be very hard for them to dictate a timeline to us because their, their building and development timeline might not meet matchup with ours.
That's right.
The other, the other conversation I've had, and you all know I was planning on having this conversation with Will White with Greystone Properties today. And again, it was just a very initial conversation with Mr. Will White, but he's excited at the possibility of us even inquiring about the possibility of a, of a site down here on Highway 27. Near, it, it's kind of right near Makin's place there on, on 27. Again, just a very initial conversation with him, but also emphasize to him that if that property was allocated, whatever, whatever terms that looks like, it would have to be development-driven in that we would have to have more reassurance and more data on what those houses are gonna be like. Are they, are they gonna be $600,000 houses on two acres? Or are they gonna be, you know, $250,000 houses on?
I think those days.
An acre, a quarter acre.
I ain't seen a house for 250 in.
Or, you know, there's also.
Sorry, what, what'd you say?
I hadn't seen a house for 250, a new house.
I'm just juxtaposing a 600 versus a.
I mean, we're at the point now.
I don't even know what we call affordable nowadays. I don't even know what we call affordable housing.
As a starter, you're, you're probably right.
Here's another thing, here's another thing that would implicate these, these two sites as well. And this is another reason why I'm glad we're having this discussion is it, it could be that this went commercial rather than residential, which would then alter the decision as to where to put a school. So, yeah. So those discussion, I guess, long story short, to address everybody, those discussions have begun about two additional sites. Like I said, very initial, just establishing communications, but they're, they're willing to have those communications.
And that was the point I was trying to make is you need to be having those conversations to know what they want to do on those sites. I mean, we know what they are, we know who they are. We need to be in touch with them. And for that matter, Steve, you worried about these discussions, but just imagine for a minute if you could swap a little bit of that land that you got behind Creekside for a little bit in West Point on sewer. If you do that and you have a site in West Point where we know there's gonna be growth at some point coming up 103, that's the only place in the northwest quadrant that's gonna grow. But if you have that, does that eliminate the need for a school at Hopewell Church? And if you have those discussions, and, and I'm not saying any of these are right. What I'm asking is for you to have those conversations and discussions and, and be open to that and not lock yourself into one site just because either out of spite or out of loyalty to, to a past decision. You can always sell that land, swap it, use it for infrastructure, use it to put in sewer. It doesn't mean that that's, I don't have the answers, I'm just asking you to ask the questions.
Sure.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Marlowe.
Thank you, Mr. Marlowe. Next on the list is Mr. Brian McKee. Good evening.
I've got some of the same questions, Morgan does, but maybe phrased and a little bit different from, from a little perspective. I like numbers. Not, not so much as perhaps my son's a numbers guy, but I, but I still like numbers. I picked my daughter up yesterday from school and I'd been on the phone with Morgan talking about this meeting. And she said, what are y'all, what are you gonna be meeting with the board for? She's 13. And I said, I explained to her without shaking it in one way or another and just explained the fact of what you explained a moment ago. The county's growing and schools are full, we're gonna need more space. And we want to talk to them about where they're potentially going to build a new school. And she said, well, where are they thinking about building a new school? I set up off Hopewell Church Road is one of the places. And she said, where? She's got a friend that lives, who's grandma, I said, right near where Avery's grandmother lives, less than a quarter of a mile from the, the site there at Hopewell Church Road. She wrinkled her face up, looked at me kind of confused and says, that doesn't make any sense, ain't enough kids up there for a school. The 13-year-old got it. So, you know, and she hadn't seen the numbers. She hadn't seen, you know, what the population breakdown in the county is. And I heard you going and talking about the, the kids coming out of the houses that are there, the, the population. Have you broken down the county sort of in quadrants and looked to see what the makeup is? I'm sure you have.
Yes, we have.
And I, I did a little bit of that myself and came up with some, some interesting numbers. And I know the way I broke it down is probably different than the way you did, just because two different people trying to do the same task two different ways. But so that you can see what, what I'm looking at, what I'm talking from, I did bring a few copies of the map. I don't know if I have enough of them here for everybody, but this just shows you how I broke it down. I'm afraid somebody's gonna have to share. I'll come over there and share with you, Bridget. Outstanding. So I've sort of broke the, the county into four different quadrants, not necessarily equal in space, but fairly equal. Using some online tools that are pulling data from US Census data gives, you know, gives some approximate population counts for those. That northwest quadrant, which Hopewell Church Road is the star, right there in the center of that, that is the Hopewell Church Road location's pretty far north in that quadrant, population there is 4,200 people approximately. Step over to the northeast side and it's 6,100 and that incorporates virtually all of Hamilton and Pine Mountain city limits. Then you drop down to the southeast and west. The southeast is 11,500 people and the southwest is 12,500 people. There's a drastic difference in the number north to south. We all know that, but it helps to have some numbers assigned to that. But those numbers don't necessarily reflect, as y'all pointed out a moment ago, what the impact on the school's going to be. Because the demographics inside those populations make a difference. Well, in that northwest quadrant, the percentage of the population below age 18 is about 19%. That northeast quadrant's about 19.5%. That southeast quadrant is about 23%. And that southwest quadrant is about 23.5%. So you actually have a higher percentage of the larger population areas under the age of 18. And that's the area, that's the population group we're concerned with. That northwest quadrant has a much higher percentage of individuals who are 40 and above, which is less likely to have children in school. And to put some additional numbers to those percentages, that's about 800 people below the age of 18 in the northwest quadrant. It's almost 1,200 in the northeast quadrant. It's 2,650 in that southeast quadrant. And it's almost 3,000, it's over 29, it's 2938 in that southwest quadrant. So you've got what, almost 6,000, 5,600, 5,700 people under the age of 18 in the south side of the county versus just shy of 2,000 in the entire north side of the county. So does it make sense to then build a school where the children are not? I mean, use the same, same phrase I used in a commissioner's meeting about that Ag Center. It's not the field of dreams, you can't build it and they'll, they'll come. You need to build it where they are and where you are relatively sure they're gonna be. We're asking about the, you know, how do we know this isn't gonna be, you know, a 2.0 here? Well, Greystone is building out the Grove, we see it, you know, you've talked to him, you see what they're doing. And then you look at the map, property map, and he's got 2,500 acres directly adjacent to what he's already developing. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out, he's gonna develop that too. And whether some of it's commercial versus all of it being residential. Hey, when you got 2,500 acres, I should hope some of it's gonna be commercial. But you can bank on the fact a lot of it is gonna be residential. We see the growth coming, people don't want to live inside Columbus, they would much rather live in Harris County. And I don't blame them, I don't want to live in Columbus either. So, you know, what's the impact of that? And Dr. Finney, you probably have a better idea of this than I do. When we start talking about busing, you know, we know it's a concern. What is our operational cost per mile for a bus? Do you happen to know that?
Operational cost per mile, you get about, you get about eight miles to the gallon on a.
I, I'm moving more towards the total operational cost of a bus.
I'd have to get that number for you.
Well, I, I pulled some and I have no idea for Harris County specific, but off some state data that is there, the charts that they make available for reimbursement that where they, what is it, 36.7% they pay us of, off of a chart, reimbursement, reimburses for some of our transportation expenses.
If it's even that much.
And I think it has jumped to that. But using the charts that they gave for Harris County, it looks like it, and I'm, like I said, I could be completely wrong on this, but it looks like the operational cost per mile is about $11 a mile. And that includes the cost of the bus and maintenance and bus driver and insurance and, and fuel, $11 a mile. So i- if you play out that hypothetical, and I don't know how many buses would potentially have to service the school coming from the south side of the county. But if you take a bus and, and you don't, don't compute the mileage it used to gather the kids, but just from exit 19 to the Hopewell Church Road site is about 14 miles. So figure in 28 miles a day, that's $308 a day per bus. That's $55,440 per year per bus, busing kids to that school. And like I said, that doesn't, doesn't count in, you know, I'm not counting the mileage spent to pick kids up, just the extra mileage to get from the south side of the county to that site. And if you, you know, roll that out, if it's five buses full of kids and that's it, just five, that, that comes out to $1,540 a day or $277,200 per year. That's, that's a lot of money to, to be, be throwing away, which is effectively what we would be doing with it. And where that's a real concern of mine, if you make that decision, it's not your money you're throwing away, it's my money you're throwing away. And I take that personally. And I pay on my little 7.29 acres and a house, I pay almost $5,000 a year in tax. Two-thirds of that is a result of this board. And I have no problem paying my fair share of taxes. I just want to make sure that what you do with it is that you're being a good steward for that tax money. And if you're busing kids and it, now granted, you may not bus every child to that school, you may backfill that school. You know, you may pull kids out of. You know, you may pull kids out of, say, park and put them there. Hey, I get that, that, that makes sense. Kids out of Mountain Hill, get there. That lowers the number that are being, being bused. But if you pull kids out of park and send them there, then you got to backfill park, probably from kids at Pine Ridge. And if you're backfilling kids into park from Pine Ridge, it's the same thing. You rob Peter to pay Paul. You still got kids from south side of the county having to be bused to the north side of the county. And it's going to be about the same mileage, maybe further, um, there. So the only school that it makes sense for would be Mountain Hill because most of the kids in that Northwest quadrant attend Mountain Hill anyway. So, you know, an additional impact there is what is the impact on the parents of car riders in those scenarios? The greatest percentage of our population works in Muskogee County. And we're bedroom community. That's, that's what we are. So if you are now busing kids north and car riders, parents are now having to carry kids north 15 to 20 miles. How much additional time are you adding to their daily commute? You're not adding 15 minutes, you're adding 30 to 45 minutes, an hour, hour and a half, depending on where they're coming from. Because they got to come through school traffic. They got to go up there. They got to wait in that car rider line. They got to drop the kids up. All right, now they, they can get to work on time. So what's the impact of that? You got more kids riding buses. And now you just compounded the busing issue. You've added the potential to have more children on the buses that we already know is going to be expensive. So I, I just, I agree with my 13 year old. Um, maybe I won't wrinkle my face up and look at you with a confused look. I'll say the same thing. It doesn't make any sense. Why in the world would we elect to build a school in the middle of the least populated quadrant of the county? And Mr. Morlow mentioned a while ago, there's no hope of growth in this quadrant. For a number of reasons, sewer, water, that's one of them. But another one, and I, I took a look at this. You notice I, I indicated the number of acres in that Northwest quadrant. And that's, that's approximate. I mean, I think 79,000 something inside that red shaded area. Of that 80,000 acres, there are 11 large tract landowners that collectively own approximately 28,000 acres. 11 individuals or entities that own about 28,000 acres. And that there are certain or more, but those 11 individuals for one reason or another, for business, for, um, trusts, for personal reasons. The likelihood of any of those 11 developing any of that 28,000 acres anytime in the foreseeable future is almost nil. And to give you an idea of, of who some of those people are and why it's, it's unlikely. I'm talking about Soma Farms, that's Dan Ammons. He's not likely to be selling and developing Soma Farms. Foxworthy with Beloved LLC, about 2,800 acres there. He, I don't think he's going to want to turn his hunt and preserve into a commercial development. We've got Warehouser, the, you know, timber company, um, owns 22 and 3,000 acres in that quadrant. Again, they, they've owned that land for a long time. They have an ongoing interest in maintaining it as timberland. And, you know, I don't imagine we're going to see a lot of that turn into development. Georgia Power. Uh, same thing. They've got a, a pretty good block of land. Yeah, they, they lease out, you know, along the edge of the water, but is it backs up from there? Uh, they're, they're not doing a lot with regard to, uh, development. The Callaways, uh, several entities associated with the Callaway name, uh, own several thousands of acres. So we're, we're not really talking about people that are jumping to build houses, to add children to the area. They want to add deer. They want to add turkey. They want to add trees, but kids not so much. So a- again, one more reason it doesn't make sense to build a school in the middle of a dead zone. Are there any questions?
Thank you. The next one that was a potential speaker, Mr. Zerner.
Okay, thank you.
Come on up, Mr. Carl.
Did elementary school back a long time ago? But, um, real quick, from a developer's point of perspective, I think it would be wise for, for y'all to like assemble some of us and say, what are your plans? What do you need? Because how we develop and how we decide where to put things can encourage a lot of this, just like everybody said, but also where you put your school can help encourage growth. Um, and I think it's very important because how do you get paid? How does the school make money? Hardware tax, right? We need it. And a lot of stuff has been said about affordable housing. And I'm saying affordable, but entry level housing is expensive. And that's why in Harris County, like you said, that's why we've got a gap in elementary kids and older kids. As developers, we need help getting infrastructure in place, just be part of this community, to get afford lots that we can build houses under 300,000. And it can be a partnership. It can be a public, private partnership between us, the school board, the county, everyone to, to actually get something that flows with this county. So that's, I just want to encourage that. So that we do grow in a good way and that my kids can afford to live here or have a place that they can raise their kids here. So that, that's my group. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you very much.
It's got, Mr. Carlisle. I was going to ask, now you have, my understanding of what kind of like Morgan says, kind of heard about.
We did, we did 11 lots. We did 11 lots. I think it's going to end up in 11 lots in Pine Mountain. Pine Mountain worked with us. They gave us, in an old blighted section, they gave us an opportunity to quarter acre lots. Which, and they have water and sewer there and it's all on the street, which made it a little bit more affordable for us to be able to build those houses. So our target price is between 270 and 300. Those houses range from 1,300 to 1,500 square feet.
And you've got the sewage and the water.
Yes, Pine Mountain has a sewer and the water right there. So you only have two, you got two sewer systems in Pine Mountain. You have the, the county or the cities and you've got Callaways. And then, yeah, Hamilton, that's your only three sewer systems in here, other than what they bring up from Columbus. So that's why I'm saying if this board can encourage or get with the commissioners and I mean, have some communication, have some thought and, and really grow the way the county wants to grow. Or in a, have a good direction. I mean, with traffic flows and all that stuff and, and drive some commercial here. I mean, talking about driving, just, just think if, if, if I have to drive to go get my kid from school, wouldn't it be great if there was a grocery store right here? But we can't have a grocery store because we can't get fill, you can't have sewer, you can't get fill lines. I mean, you got to have so much, it's, we're backwards. So that I, I would rather see us do something collectively that, that makes sense and stops spinning our wheels.
Well, that's, that's one reason too, that we've re-initiated meetings with the Harris County Commissioners.
Absolutely. And I'm glad to hear it. I'm, I'm glad, but I would also.
In the past, they, um, years and years back, we used to meet, then there were individuals who came on to that board who were not interested and didn't see a need
Right.
to do that. And they don't pass the information to us in a manner that would be beneficial to us as in the past.
Right.
So.
And, and by that, what you're talking about, let me, let me clarify, just so I understand what you're, you're, are you discussing when they used to send you the, uh, preliminary plats? Or what the rezonings that were coming? Or are you talking about in general, like discussions of growth?
In general.
In general, okay. I just want, I mean, I knew at one time that when I was on planning commission, we were, we, you were supposed to be getting all the stuff that we were doing. I don't know if you ever got it.
Well, I, I would like to, I'd like to praise Brian Williams. Um, he, he communicates very well with us.
That's awesome. I mean, and, and the more communication, the better. But I would also encourage you to get not just with the commissioners, but with the developers, the people that, that are spending the money, the people that's got the land. I mean, try to see where they're going. I mean, work with them, not against them. Because I, I think that everybody will have a better, much more usable product. If, if you do it, if you think about it and you do it as a collective and you think about traffic patterns and everything else, you stop a lot of traffic in Harris County that, that becomes unnecessary by causing somebody to drive an extra 20 miles to go get something. So we've got to start, we've got to stop thinking like we're large and rule where it doesn't take us long to go from Hamilton to Pine Mountain. We got to think, how long does it take me to go around, uh, uh, Hamilton? You know, I mean, it, it's going to get there at some point. They're four land, 27 to 315 now. I mean, the, the traffic is here. And it's, it's not going to get better.
Well, Harris County is one of the largest counties in, in the state land wise.
It is.
Take a lot to move folks around.
So anyway, thank y'all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Callaway, Pine Mountain, Hamilton and the Grove, but you do have West Point that they have expanded into Harris County, their sewer. And you do have connection points down on the south end of the county outside of the Grove. I don't know if you can tie into those, but you've got one coming up off of Almond Road. And then you've got one or two over in Midland for sewer that you could, you could tap into.
The industrial park in West Point.
That's right.
Harris County Industrial Park is on sewer.
That's right. That's great. And that's what I'm saying. You could do that. And to your point about having those discussions, I mean, it's great that you're having those discussions.
The Southern Terminus, we, we discussed that today.
It, right.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Those discussions, you know, I, I asked for those even when I was on this board. And, um, I would encourage you to, to have those discussions, but not just tell each other what you're doing. Plan together. Sit down and actually before you're doing stuff, talk about that stuff and say, look, this is what we're thinking. How does this affect? Just like that water tower on Hopeful Church Road. I don't even know if that's even been a thought, but I mean, we all know there's county water there, but if you increase that demand is a capacity there without costing another million dollars to build a water tower. I mean, I don't know the answer to that. And you may be perfectly fine to put one there. But those, those are the kind of things when you start actually planning together and not just telling each other what you're doing that you can accomplish together. And, and that's what I would like to encourage is just continue to work together, ask the questions, do what Chance said. We're not saying go to every home builder because you'll get five million different answers. You know who the players are, and I'm not saying give them preferential treatment, but find out what their plans are. And, and build according to those plans. And you might, you might accomplish more than you think you can.
Very good point. Thank you.
Thank you, Morgan.
Anyone else, even though you didn't sign up? Oh yeah, very, very much so. Did anyone else want to, want to speak? Well, I, I'd like to say thank you to everyone that did come and speak today and the folks that have called me. Um, I know I've received a few phone calls and talked about this with some members of the public. You know, I, I agree with, with Mr. Morlow and the, and Mr. McKean and, and, um, Mr. Carlisle, you know, we, we need to work together and, and for far too long, these two, this entity and the county commission did not work together. We would find out a new subdivision was going in when the zoning sign showed up. We didn't know. Nobody ever told us. So, you know, if it, if it weren't for other members of the community coming and telling us, we, we never knew. So it was hard for us to plan for things when, when Mr. Marlowe was on the board. It was hard for us to plan for anything. Because we didn't have that line of communication and it has gotten better and they have brought on some staff. This gentleman in the back of room, Mr. Panzer, that's going to be beneficial to the county and help us get a plan to grow together. And not just this entity and this entity, because, sorry, because we all are Harris County. We, we're, we all love Harris County or we wouldn't be in this room right now. So I'd like to thank everyone that attended. You, you've given us more attendance than, than, than we normally have on one of our normal meetings. So thank you for that too. Did any other members of the board want to say anything? Yep. All right. So at this time I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn and move to our second meeting of the evening. Mr. Green, seconded by Mr. Proctor, any discussion, all in favor, we stand adjourned.